Your staff?
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
But I think they need some, okay.
We're not really... We're on my...
I was just stopped, right?
Yeah, we're on my... Alright, so, seeing form? I did that already.
Or Rob about coming, I have not heard the knock.
Oh, just wait for it to go to white.
Oh no, I think it's on now.
You get the green light?
It's white? Okay, thank you, Mary.
There's no mics of...
So, seeing form, the chair opens up the Wednesday, June seventh, two thousand seventeen Mashpee Planning Board Meeting, seven P M. We're here at Mashpee Town Hall, sixteen Great Neck Road, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Just want to let everybody know that we're being video graphed and recorded. And if you have the opportunity to address the board, please use the microphone, state your name and your business. First order of business, I'd like to invite everybody to stand with me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all. We have a set of minutes.
Two sets.
Two sets, I think...
And there's only three people that can vote on the April twentieth.
Those were your, the site, is it?
Right. And I don't know, do we have the right three people? No, we don't have Dave Kuharian.
Or Rob Hanson.
Can we do it by necessity?
No. You only got one member here that was there, so you couldn't vote on it.
Okay, so...
I hope they show up.
Leave that on the agenda, maybe if they come later, well, Rob's not gonna be here.
What's that?
Rob is definitely not gonna be here.
Oh, Rob is not coming?
So, anyway, if David Kuharian comes later, we will take that matter back up. Okay, so, but we do have enough people here to approve the May seventeenth minutes. Okay, if there's no comments, I'll accept a motion to approve as presented.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as may seventeen as written.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have a question, is this list of documents from the town manager I've never seen, I wonder who got those documents?
They pa- uh, he did pass them out that evening.
Oh, I didn't get anything.
If I have them in my packet, I will give them to you. Alright, so, um, next item, special permit. Our applicant is D P F Mashpee L L C, location is south Cape Village, building B, accessories map eighty-one, block four. Request a signature of special permit modification, which was approved on May third, two thousand seventeen. I wasn't in attendance that night, so, um, you guys will have to sign. And, um, Jen, David, uh, did not vote on the minutes because he was absent the May seventeenth.
Let's see who voted on this special permit. I had indicated to Tom that you could do this later since he's here and they're not.
What?
He could do Tom's down and...
Tom's is next.
So there was Kuharian coming, Balzerini and Wheaton.
So you have three here tonight.
You get three, uh, you need four for the special permit, so... I guess if we can get the signatures we can get and, uh...
If there's no more vote we have to take?
No, no.
Just your signature after the, okay.
We need four signatures, uh, of those four members that voted on it to get it recorded, so, uh, I guess we can at least for guys sign it. And, uh, we need to prepare for the fourth meeting.
Oh, okay, there's an email in here from you Charlie, right? You're on the thread. What, you've sent an email about this?
No. Not, not a recent one, that's... A while ago.
Oh, I thought you were just... You're just C C'd on this.
I simply questioned the turning radius, make sure there was clearance there. Then we had, I think you've got a letter. I'm fine chief, it says, everything's cool.
We got three.
My goodness. Any more?
There's a moment.
Any more, alright, so...
All right, I'm gonna indicate that it was signed tonight, but we still need to get Dave's signature on it.
Okay, so our next item is a special permit, applicant is Mashpee Commons L P. The location is north of thirty-four Bates Road, accessories map seventy-four, block twenty-two. The approval of a special permit modification for site plan change to North Market Street. Projected project to add two carport structures with solar panels above eighty parking spaces in existing parking lot. We had voted on the seventeenth of May that no advertised public hearing will be necessary. However, this agenda was publicly advertised per open meeting law. Okay, so I recognize the project proponent.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Thomas Ferranti. I am here on behalf of Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership and Mashpee Commons L L C to request a modification to the special permit for North Market Street. The special permit modification request is to install two carport structures with solar panels in the northernmost parking lot on the North Market Street property. It's the parking lot behind the building that has the U P S store, the dialysis clinic, Zoe's Pizza. The parking lot has approximately, uh, not approximately, the parking lot has one hundred and twenty-eight spaces and eighty of those spaces would end up being covered by the carport structures. Uh, the two carport structures in total will have seven hundred and twenty solar panels. There will be four hundred and sixty-eight on D T one, which is the long row of parking, and there'll be two hundred and fifty-two on D T two, which is the short row of parking right behind the building with the U P S store. The average annual production for the seven hundred and twenty solar panels will be thirty-six thousand kilowatt hours. It, obviously, it fluctuates and varies depending on the number of days, but that's what the, the production is estimated to be. It's a three hundred and thirteen kilowatt system, which is approximately thirty-six thousand kilowatt hours. As the, the project proponent, we feel that this is a benefit to the North Market Street property for a, a few reasons. The first one is that eighty parking spaces would end up being covered. Specifically, there are parking spaces behind the entrance that leads to the dialysis clinic that will end up being covered. So, those folks that are coming to get their treatment at the dialysis clinic will have the opportunity, including the handicap parking space.
Way over.
Oh.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, Tom's stuff.
That's so the audience could see it.
Is that better?
Yeah, they can see it if they sit way over there. Mister Audience.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you very much.
Um, there will be covered parking, uh, which will allow for those folks that are going to the dialysis clinic to have the opportunity to, uh, to park in spaces that are not subject to inclement weather. Additionally, the stormwater infrastructure was designed through the design of the carport structure so that there will be no modifications to the existing infrastructure that are required. It's a, basically a net zero. And in our opinion, it actually is a benefit to the stormwater infrastructure because rather than having the rainwater hit the asphalt before it goes into the underground infrastructure, it'll actually hit the solar panels. The panel design is an inverted V, the canopy is an inverted V with a centralized gutter system. So, the rainwater hits the panels, goes into the integral gutter system, down into the ground before it goes to the retention basin, so...
Okay, so it doesn't fall off?
Correct, it, it's an inverted V with a center column structure, and so all the rainwater is directed to the center of the structure where it will go vertical down below grade. In, in addition to those benefits, I mean, I think, I think everyone sort of knows the benefits of, of solar generation in this day and age. You know, we have currently nine buildings in Mashpee Commons with solar panels on the roofs right now.
Speaking of our president?
It reduces the demand on the grid, it, uh, it, you know, it allows the stabilized stabilization of utility rates and reduces the impact on the utility infrastructure, which doesn't require additions to that infrastructure. As mentioned, the location of the carport structures will be in the northernmost parking lot. Uh, we do have an abutting property owner to the north, Sandpiper Village condominiums. And very early on in this process, before we even submitted anything to the town, I actually sat down with a couple of members of their Board of Directors to walk them through the project, uh, just to make them aware of what we're, what we were trying to do and what we were proposing.
That's cool looking.
There were no comments, there were no questions at that time, they did not have any issues at that time.
Commission required the lighting stuff.
Really, the impact that they'll have is, is solely whatever noise is generated during construction. On sheet P V zero one zero, we added some dimensions onto the plan at the request of the board at, at my last meeting to show the distance between the panels and the property line. Now, you can see that the closest distance is, is a little over forty-seven feet, but that's only to the property line. There's an additional buffer of anywhere from fifty to sixty feet between the property line and, and, and the development with, you know, very mature trees that are thirty-five, forty feet tall. From the panels themselves, it's ninety, approximately ninety feet to Ryan's Way and approximately a hundred and twenty feet to the closest building. There are two buildings, I believe, with second floor units that have the potential to look towards the carport structures, but based on the angle of tho- those units, it's, it's not that they're looking straight out. But again, they would be looking at the trees, they wouldn't be looking at necessarily anything that's...
Are they shown on the other picture? The photograph that you have on the other side?
Sandpiper is shown on this photo, yes. So the carport structures would be this parking lot and this parking lot. The property line runs right through here, this is the buffer. It's approximately ninety feet from here to Ryan's Way and then another thirty feet from the edge of, the southern edge of Ryan's Way to the buildings. And, and again, we met with, with Sandpiper Board of Direct, a couple of members of the Sandpiper Board of Directors. We provided them with information that they were going to include in their newsletter out to their residents. I believe that one of the Board of Directors met with one of the tenants that is living in one of the second floor units, and to date, I have not received any comments or concerns from, from anyone at Sandpiper. Additionally, one of the questions that was asked the last time I was here was, was what it will, what it will look like as you enter off of Great Neck Road. This is what you see right now as you come in off of Great Neck Road behind Stop and Shop and you come into the back of, of the North Market Street development. And rather than do a rendering, which basically takes everything out except for the building and the carport structure, what we did is, we actually added in some imagery of what the carport structure will look like. And part of the reason that we did this was to show the relationship between the trees and the light poles to the overall height of the structure. At its lowest point, the carport structure will have thirteen feet, six inches of clearance from the road to the, to the underside of the carport structure. At its highest point, it's, it's eighteen feet, two inches of clearance. Our parking lot light poles are twenty feet, the trees are thirty feet. So you, you can see, and it gives you a little bit of a sense of proportion with the person walking in the picture and the cars parked underneath, that, that this won't, won't seem out of scale adjacent to the building. And I know one of the concerns that was raised the last time I was here was the facility that was installed at the Spalding Rehab Center and, and the, the size of that structure. I don't have the overall specific dimensions of that structure. I, I, you know, we did go and see it and we tried to find as much information as we could. It's a little bit of a different design and really, we, we kept this as low to the ground as we could. There are requirements for fire department access to make sure that they have proper clearance underneath. And so the thirteen feet, six inches is pretty much the, the bottom that we could go to without impacting any fire department access to the, to the facility. In your packet, you will ha- you will see that we've included a, a set of drawings for the project. The site plan, which you've already looked at, um, P V zero one zero. There's a, a blow up of, of the canopy layout. It always seems to go much better when I'm going through it in my office, trying to fold things.
It's because you're not having to hold the mic.
Exactly. This might be better. Again, this is a, this is a blow up of the, of the canopy structures, there'll be two hundred and fifty-two on D T two and four hundred and sixty-eight on D T one. The, uh, the inverted V will be supported by structural columns running along the center line. And while they are wider than a traditional light pole base for a parking lot light, we don't believe that it will impact parking on the North Market Street side. Light pole bases are one and a half to, to two feet in diameter. These column bases are gonna be three feet in diameter. So it will, it will encroach a little bit more on the parking spaces, but with, with eighteen foot parking spaces, it still allows sufficient room for cars to park in those parking spaces. So, we are, we are planning right now to not have any disruption to, to any of the parking spaces that are currently there. If anything, one of the things that we're looking at right now, there are existing parking islands. And while we will maintain the, the outer edge of that curb to define the curb radius, to define the road, we will no longer have a need for, for planting islands in there. The trees will go away, the grass will go away. If we determine that we have enough room to put in more parking spaces, we, we will actually explore doing that. But right now, the plan is to just leave the parking layout the way that it is and install the, the structure itself.
Are you gonna remove all the planting beds?
There are five planting beds that are disrupted by, by the carport structures. There are three with D T one and two with D T two. And the trees and all the grass will be removed because it, it just won't grow anymore once it's underneath the carport structure. So if it's, if it's not wide enough to, to turn it into a parking space, we'll put pavers down so that it allows a place for, for folks to walk. When we remove the parking lot lights, because there are also parking lot lights throughout, what you'll see in, later on in your packet, there's a, there's a lighting plan. And part of the reason that I submitted an update, set, updated set of drawings to, to, to Mr. Fadala earlier this week, yesterday. As we got through our process with the Cape Cod Commission, one of the things that they focused on was the lighting for the project and making sure that we, we adhere to the conditions and the requirements of our D R I, which have specific light cutoffs and make sure that there's no light infiltration to the abutters or to the night sky. And it was a very lengthy process, the Cape Cod Commission did approve the D R I modification, which we received on Monday. And this lighting information that's submitted in your packet is what we submitted to the Cape Cod Commission. And there's a, there's a, there's a cut sheet of the light fixture that we've proposed. And there are two different lighting drawings. There's one that shows the lighting levels on the ground, and then there's one that shows the lighting levels, uh, the, the up, you know, the, the night sky lighting. And what you'll see is that there's, there is no light infiltration to the abutting property owner. It, it becomes zero point zero as you get to the property line. So the lights will hang below the carport structure and they will only illuminate the area that they need to illuminate. They won't, they won't pollute the night sky and they won't impact the neighbors.
Tom, can I just ask a question? Does this, um, change the amount of light that's available to the other parking spaces along the northern boundary that are currently probably lit up by the, the higher light standards?
It's, it's the same, it's the same lu- are you talking about the ones that are covered?
The ones north of the canopy.
That, we will not remove the parking lot, there are parking lot lights along the northern edge.
Oh, there are other lights there.
There are additional ones just to the north of the curb line between the parking lot and Sandpiper. Those lighting fixtures will remain, so this row of parking...
So these calculations are only the lights from these things, not the existing lights?
Correct, we, we only focused on the light that was associated with the canopy and the carport structures.
While you were on the islands, um, it seems to be that there's three of them that are actually part of the edge of roadways.
Correct.
Maybe only the two in the, the northern canopy that might be able to go and be replaced by parking spaces.
Correct, the, the two that are on either end of D T two and the, and the eastern edge of D T one.
That's the edge of...
Those will remain to define the edge of the, the parking and it will define the road. And, and that was one of the things that we worked through with the fire department after our informal review. The fire department asked us to prove to them that they could still get a vehicle basically to the northern side of, of building two, the building with the U P S store and, and beyond beauty. It's thirteen feet, six inches from the, the, the southwest corner of D T two to the closest building. And at thirteen feet, six inches, they have, uh, they have ample clearance to get their truck by. We ran the, the turning radius of the, the fire truck on the plan to prove to the fire department. And Deputy Phelan has responded that he's comfortable with, with what we have shown and that they'll be able to access. This is a nice segue into my design review and plan review process. I was originally on the agenda for yesterday, but due to lack of quorum, they postponed the meeting from yesterday to tomorrow. And tomorrow, it's only plan review. Uh, at that time, I will go through this conversation again with the deputy fire chief, who typically attends those meetings and make sure that he is comfortable with what we are proposing.
So, there's three kind of islands that are staying.
Just, the islands necessarily aren't staying, but we are leaving the defined edge so that we have a defined roadway to demonstrate to the fire department that they will have access. We, we don't want to remove the eastern and the western edge of those islands and allow cars to start creeping out into the roadway. So we're gonna leave those defined edges.
But you might...
Might as well just leave the islands because they've got the lights in the middle of them.
Yeah, again, that's one of the things that we, you know, we might leave all of the islands and, and just, and remove the plantings out of them. That's one of the things that as we get into the process of construction, we'll make that decision on the fly.
Okay, but that curb, there'll be some type of curb...
Correct.
Still in those three spots.
Correct, correct, correct.
So is the board, um, since I have to draft up a decision, is the board okay with the concept of removing two of those islands?
Yeah.
The D T one, the, the western ones?
And modifying the other three?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what you would modify in the other three. I mean, you've got the light standard in the middle of it, you can't turn it into a parking space. Maybe just leave the curb as it is, uh, just bounding a parking space.
We, we tried during the...
It's gonna give you anything to...
I mean, during the design process, we tried to centralize all of the drainage infrastructure, the, the vertical components of the system to come down where the islands are, but it was, it was too much. So we ended up having to go with, with more than just those, those, those locations.
There's no low light plantings you can still...
It would be zero light plantings because...
Zero light plantings? That's like an aquatic plant.
And I don't think we're allowed to use grow lights underneath a canopy to, to allow anything to grow, uh, uh, either.
In, in the winter time...
Yes.
If it gets like rainy, then it freezes. There's no sun going on the, the pavement. Are you, are you concerned about that or you gonna make...
Well, we, we are always concerned about snow removal at Mashpee Commons. That's one of the things that we pride ourselves on is that we...
But I'm thinking like, it's more like you should salt that area.
I agree, and, and the dialysis clinic, that parking lot is one that we focus on, probably more than the dialysis clinic, C V S, Stop and Shop. Those locations, we basically have someone checking those, those areas repeatedly to make sure that we don't have any ice, we don't have any, you know, we don't have any piles of snow in there. We, we are constantly checking those locations. So, one of the reasons that we went with the inverted V design was if you've seen some of the other carport structures, for example, the one at the Ice Arena in Falmouth and the one at Spalding Rehab, the way that they're tilted, there is always water spilling off the edge of those carports. And we are very conscientious of making sure that we don't have any water that's dripping and freezing and, and creating these slip hazards. So, that was one of the main reasons that we went with the inverted V was so that we could control where the majority of the, the rainwater and, and the snow precipitation falls.
And why not, because it...
Yeah.
So, this electricity goes to the grid?
Well...
Or do you have batteries?
It, so there are...
Because I'm curious if you'd have the batteries, where you stored them?
Another one of the packages in your drawing, it, this, this package shows the inverters that are included with the, the structure. And all of the inverters feed a new transformer. And we're still working through the location of where the transformer will go with Eversource. But the way that the system currently operates in Mashpee Commons, all nine buildings ultimately feed one transformer that's located in an island behind the post office. That power is then used, excuse me, to offset electricity usage throughout Mashpee Commons. So, the wastewater treatment facility, parking lot lights, sidewalk lights, all that electricity goes to the transformer and then it's allocated to certain meters that are throughout Mashpee Commons. So it's, it's, yes, it is technically going back to the grid, but it's going back to the grid to offset what our usage is. And this system will be a similar situation.
So you're not storing that electricity though?
Correct, correct, correct. Yeah, that was one of the, one of the things that we learned as we got into the solar, because we, we've looked at solar. I've been here for fourteen years and we've been looking at solar for a long time. And one of the, one of the new things that they came out with that we learned a few years ago was that it used to be just like that. It used to be you put solar on a building and it would feed, you know, a collector in that building and the solar and the energy you were generating would be used for that building. That doesn't necessarily work for us because our buildings are typically tenant occupied and those tenants are paying for the meters. We wanted to go to common area things, corridors, parking lot lights. And it didn't work that way. This does, and, and that was why this was such a, such a positive thing for us when we learned this. And it's why we, we pushed the nine buildings last year and why we're, why we're trying to do this one again. It's just because it allows us to really start utilizing the energy that we're generating through the system.
So, I mean, you're basically doing what everybody does is net metering.
Exactly, it's, it's exactly what it is, it's net metering and we, we get a form and we fill out...
Batteries are too expensive, I mean, you can't really afford a battery backup.
The net metering, you're going to the grid and then they give you a rebate.
Correct, correct. Um, one of the really interesting things about the system that we have is it, we get real time updates. There's a, there's a, a link that we can go to where we see the, the instantaneous production of the system. So if you go on a day like today, you can see how much it's producing, whereas a day like yesterday, not so much. But the interesting thing was through the first, it's been basically a year now since we, since we turned on the system in Mashpee Commons and we are pretty much right on target with what the projections were for power generation for the first nine buildings.
I've really heard that.
Yeah.
Tom, do you, do you have to, uh, uh, raise the, the actual panels up at all on the flatter of the two slopes in order to get more sun...
There are panels on, on both sides of the inverted V.
I know, but the one that's to your right there...
This one.
It's sort of sloping in the opposite direction. Do you have to raise the panels up on top of that structure so that they face south more?
As far as I know, the reason that they, that they have the angle that they do is, you know, certainly you're gonna have more production on the, on the higher slope. That's the one that gets the majority of the sun. And this one is just raised enough where, once the sun gets beyond the generation of this side, the, the northern side of the panel, then the southern side of the panel gets what's left. So, the panels are flat on the, on the structure, they're not, they're not tilted on top of the angle.
But they're pitched away from the sun?
Uh, not necessarily.
No?
Depends on the time of year, I mean, it's gonna have to be a really low angle to...
Yeah, we, we don't have panels that, there are some companies that have panels that actually shift with the sun. This system is not like that, this, these panels are stationary when they're installed. The panels that we installed on the roofs all do have a pitch because they're on a flat roof. We're just creating the pitch with the inverted V itself.
Um, the only other question I had, Mary, was, um, the pedestals which support this, some of them will not be in islands, they'll actually be at the intersection of parking spaces.
Correct.
Are you gonna paint those?
We can.
I think you should.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're gonna have a bunch of crunched bumpers.
We, we typically don't paint our light pole bases that are in parking lots. We leave the concrete.
Yellow?
Yellow.
White won't work?
No.
Okay.
When it snows, it'll look right, just like the snow.
Oh, duh, okay.
And, and gray ones look like cloudy days.
Okay.
It, it's really, I know, I hit the one of Roche Brothers, I can't say it. I wish it was painted.
We're gonna do yellow then.
I was turning it like boom, about eight hundred dollars worth of damage. And I was just going five miles an hour, but it...
And make, make it reflective yellow. For nighttime.
Breaking the ice.
Age friendly yellow.
Neon, should we put some neon over there? The town likes neon things, right? We'll do some neon over there.
No, no agenda, please.
Either that or some smaller bollards that are vinyl coated?
I think the paint would be, um, um, something we'd be more interested in because I think if you start putting bollards...
Then you're covering more area of space, yeah.
Then you are gonna start impacting parking spaces because the baller would need probably a foot more on either side.
Directly adjacent to the... Directly adjacent to the, the posts, but they wouldn't be that far out.
Or junk.
And it would give you a, a softer.
We'll look at that, but I, I, if, if the board would accept painting, I think that that would be something that would be.
Those steel? Not if they're vinyl coated.
Yeah, but how thick is the vinyl?
Enough to protect against the vinyl.
So coming in, you know, I'm, 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 thank you for the drawings. It really helped me visualize how it's gonna go. I think there's one tree that's not gonna get removed. Um.
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask the question, where's, what trees are we removing? I, I saw trees disappear when, when you did, did your display there, so.
So that first.
What's going?
That tree stays.
That, these two trees go, these two trees go, the two trees here, there's an island here with trees. So anything underneath the carport, the trees are gonna go. Anything outside the carport is going to stay.
Oh my God. You got, you got trees in there.
Maybe we'll try and transplant them, Tom.
Yeah, you know, they're stunted. They're completely stunted. I bet you could, uh, pull them out.
Well, they're, those are the kind of trees that are intended to stay small because, and with the small leaves too, because you're in a parking lot, they planted those kind of trees.
You know, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there. I don't know if, um.
I don't believe that it's indicated on any of your plans which trees are going to be removed. If that's something that the board would need to see, then, then we can put that together.
I don't think so. I'm just, I'm just, you know, as you go around.
Island are going and we can see where the islands are, right? So.
You know, you have that tree. Okay, fine. You know, car parts, the carports, they're not really that pretty. You know what I mean?
Ours is gonna be pretty. You do think, do you think we're gonna do something that's not pretty?
Didn't you see it? It was, it was colored yellow.
Right? So it would be yellow basis.
Yeah, it would be yellow.
It's not yellow?
You know, what I'm just saying is that edge, like facing the stop and shop parking lots, you know, that might be a good spot to put a piece of public art.
Well, one of the things that, and, and it doesn't really reflect this very well, but when you do a carport structure like this, you have two options for the underside. You can leave it completely exposed and so you're looking at the underside and you see basically the guts. What we've opted to do is, is basically panelize it. You know, you put it, it's a corrugated sheet bed all underneath. But that actually helps with the drainage. It allows us to, to build the gutter system into the carport. So, um, we like public art. Um, we.
Just, just, you know, thinking outside the box. I wouldn't want you to go out.
Some pretty strict signage requirements over at North Market Street though.
I think we could get those waived, but you know what I mean? I'm just saying it is a spot. It is a spot to, to, to do something creative there and it, it's small and it would, it would just.
Well, you know what you could do.
Everything looks so beautiful. You didn't, you don't want those two ugly spots. What could you do?
Paint each post to look like tree mark.
Yeah.
On the other side of the panels, you could paint leaves.
Yeah.
Yeah, green.
Sounds like a great project for the schools.
Let me look into that one.
Condition number three.
So I don't have any other questions.
No.
So just for my notes, the, the only thing I have to know, other than conforming with the plans is that they would be allowed to remove the two, two of those islands there and replace them with parking, right?
Do we need to make a motion?
Parking spaces. Um, so.
And, and again, that's not necessarily something that we will absolutely do that.
But just giving you permission as we go along, yeah.
So do we make a motion on that?
Yeah. Yeah. With like two, there's two conditions.
All right.
One is just the basic that it conformed to this set of plans.
Right.
Boilerplate. And the second one is that they would be allowed to remove those two, uh, those two islands that we talked about.
They can modify those.
Modify the two islands.
Remove the other three.
Move the other three and remove.
No, 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 there's two to be removed.
Yeah, the, the other three will remain.
Whether they modify or not. I think it's a waste of their money to modify them. They've got the curb there and they've got the thing right in the middle.
What about the trees?
Just have different.
No, the, yes, the trees can be removed.
The trees.
Yeah.
The area under the carport.
These three islands.
Will stay.
Stay to define the edge. This island and this island, they don't define anything other than just more parking spaces. Um, and they have a tree in them, but one.
Jen's got it all.
So theoretically, they could be four more parking spaces if you got rid of, they look wide enough. I'm not sure of the exact width.
Yeah, and the, and the base of the post.
Uh, yeah, you want to paint, uh, the, the base is painted yellow.
I'll put like Charlie mentioned.
Is that reflective? Safety yellow?
Ever kind of yellow I think is falling.
The gap used to be.
Traffic paint yellow.
Yeah.
Now what color is it gonna be now?
Green.
Trap, what, what is the color? What is the color that we're specifying for these things?
Reflective yellow. Or just yellow. I, I don't know.
What do we call those things?
Like, um, they're just column bases.
Column bases, reflective yellow. All right. And I, I was just wondering, one thing that struck me on the islands was, do they have, did they get used to store any snow when you have snow?
No. All the snow is, is, we, we basically push snow all the way to the north. And then if it gets too big, we, we haul it out and we take it off site. You know, a- again, because of the location of this parking lot, because it services so many people that are using the dialysis clinic, it, it really is one of the, the parking lots that we pay the most attention to. We try to do the least amount of anything in there just to make sure that.
Tom, what about the ambulance that come in there all the time?
It, it, that's why, you know, thirteen, six is, is what it is. It's so that the ambulances can get in there.
And the truck, uh, according to Deputy Chief is eleven, nine, so.
Yeah, he said anything over twelve feet was, was what they, was that, that, that was their, their minimum, I think was twelve, six.
All right. So I made a motion. We have to have a second?
Just a question. Oh, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
So I'll draft up a decision with all the boilerplate and all the stuff, uh, for the next meeting for you to sign then.
That's good.
And because there's no appeal period, that'll be it. Once it's signed, it, the next meeting can be recorded.
Okay.
There's a treatment on the I beams just for.
There, there isn't, there isn't a treatment that we've, we've looked at right now. It'll just be steel.
Is it some kind of coated steel that's gonna not rust or?
It won't rust.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I hope it doesn't rust in my lifetime at least.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. And I should plan to be back at the meeting on the twenty first is?
Um, I don't think there'll be any surprise. Well, wait a second. Whoa, 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 whoa. We forgot a whole deal here. The, uh, the plan and view committee and the design review committee are supposed to meet and make recommendations to the board as, uh, before you make your decision normally. Now, as Tom explained, the meeting that was gonna be held yesterday, a plan and design review couldn't happen. Um, the plan review committee has been put off to tomorrow. So, um, one of the things that I was gonna do in the decision was to reflect whatever comments come out of tomorrow's plan review meeting. And so in effect, um, I don't know if you want to make this.
Do we want to say that?
Subject to that or just, that's, that may just be a technicality. I mean, cause both of those committees have looked at it before.
Correct.
Approved it. It just hasn't been in the formal means.
If you bring it to those committees and they have a serious, serious, serious problem, what would, what would happen? Would it bump back to us or is it done?
Well, no, you just voted to approve it.
We voted it's passed, you know, unless we rescind that vote.
But we didn't, uh.
Voted to approve it as is.
Yeah.
As you've seen it.
And you can't, and can't you make it, and you can't make it subject to those guys because they're just advisory.
Yeah.
But technically, there has to be those meetings. Now, there's been a, a, a bigger issue relative to the design review committee, um, where Debbie Dame has said that they don't have enough members to have a quorum for a meeting, which surprises me because you have you and you have the ZBA chair. And it's my understanding that Mike Mendoza was appointed by the Board of Selectmen to be a member of that committee to give it the quorum when that first happened, when they lost the other members. And he's been sitting on that committee ever since, but Debbie all of a sudden has said, no, he's not a member. Can't vote. But, um, that was being checked at the end of the day today, whether or not there was an actual appointment by the selectmen, which I can't imagine there wasn't because that was the whole reason for them not meeting jointly and all the rest. Cause Mike was a member of the other committee at the same time and he couldn't be sitting there as a member of both committees. Um, so I think that's gonna work out, but unfortunately that sort of caused tomorrow's design review committee meeting to be canceled. So we're gonna be looking for the three of you guys to find a way to get together before the next planning board meeting so you can actually do that. And I'll say even sooner than that, so I can reference whatever your comments were and then when you met in the decision that I gotta draft up by, say, the middle of next week. Cause at the end of next week, I'm gone to a planning conference in Pittsfield, so.
I don't think we have any issues, but we need.
You need to get people there to just legally to have a meeting. I mean, you know, like I said to Tom, you guys could come to the meeting, uh, maybe it was to Pat. You just come to the meeting and read the minutes of your previous meeting and what you had to say about it and be done with it. But technically it has to happen. And the, the, and, and what I suggested, and, and I'm looking for the board's, uh, agreement or not on this, is that, uh, if it turns out that Mike wasn't appointed and he isn't appointed between now and then and they can't have a meeting, that, um, the board just consider it the, the so-called rule of necessity. If you haven't got a committee, then there's no way they can meet. It, it can't stop your process. So if the board's in agreement that if there is, there's no meeting that the.
Well, my understanding is they are looking at somebody that they are going to accept.
Or whatever. Like I said, I, as, as far as I know, Mike was already on it.
He hasn't heard any more than that. That was Monday.
But it's a four member committee and Mike made three, which is a quorum of the four member committee, so.
So I'd accept a motion that, uh, for this special permit modification only, um, that if the design review committee cannot meet in quorum before, uh.
Your next meeting.
Twenty first, two thousand seventeen, we waive that requirement.
You can't waive it, but just you determine that by rule of necessity, have to proceed anyways.
I make a motion, but then Tom.
Nope. No public hearing, no notice, no.
Joe, second it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Design review and plan review have both seen this.
Yeah.
We, we brought this to those committees as.
Although Debbie will tell you that.
Two people.
Although Debbie would tell you that design review didn't have a quorum when he's.
It was, it was an informal meeting, so it didn't matter if it was legal or not, but they, you know, we, we did bring it to those committees already and, and tomorrow we'll hopefully get the formal recommendation from the plan review committee. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully I'm the problem child for tonight.
Now Bob's real trouble out there.
I don't know how much of this.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Need necessary for me to inspect.
Well, they haven't paid any inspection fee. They paid a, a application and review fee, but they didn't pay an inspection fee, so. We haven't got, technically there's any money to, to inspect.
Nothing's changing out there.
Yeah.
Unless you want me to look at yellow bases.
Right. And the, and the, the install will be checked by the building.
Right.
So our next item is an approval not required plan. The applicant is Robert. Can you help me with your last name? No? Okay.
Oh, come on.
Yay.
It's Freda.
What's wrong with that? Come on. Good Armenian name.
Nah, Hagan.
He's a pig.
Armenian, right.
I like it. Okay. And the location.
Dave Guerrian would know how to say that.
That's right.
Whatever.
Four Wheeler Road and eighty-four Hoop Pole Road. Uh, the request is signature plan revising the lot line between two existing lots. Have we seen this before?
Well, he's seen a version. This is a changed, an amended version, so it's a re, new filing.
All right, so are these the only plans we have?
Yeah, he's, he's filing it at the meeting. That's where you file an A and R plan. So it's, this is his filing.
All right. I think you give it to Tom.
I give it to Tom. The Mylar is in here too?
Well, yeah. Hang on. We'll put the Mylar out on the table.
I know, you know, it's your hand.
Where's the Mylar?
It's in there. It's hidden for sure. I did it back. It's like a hole.
I see it.
There it is.
Oh, God, this color.
Yes.
What are these?
Yeah, like right over there.
Fishing forum. Three A's at an N.
Three A's and an N, absolutely. And I gotta create a decision once they do something.
Yep.
Okay, so what's going on here?
Uh, we have an eighty thousand square foot lot and, uh, I've decided to.
Get the mic.
Yeah, I decided to sell it. Wow, I'm really short.
No, take it out. You can take it out.
You can tilt it. Pick it up.
It's okay. And, uh, we're just making the lot a little bit bigger.
Is that lot one A?
That is lot one A.
There's three point oh two acres in it?
Yes. Was eighty thousand feet. I think it's a hundred and thirty thousand.
Any structures on either of these lots?
Any structures? No.
No, there's just a whole bunch of trees and poison ivy and ticks.
Notice that one of the lots includes a pond though. Um, this lot includes the pond area, but he separated out the land area from the, the total, so. And it's his own private pond. Which is a really cool thing they have. It's full of, full of bass, but don't tell anybody.
It just went over the airways.
Just went out on slow TV.
Now everybody knows.
All the fishermen watch it.
Nah.
The knock on my door if they could fish.
They're out fishing. It's evening, right?
Anybody have any questions?
Nope. Missed the requirement. What about Charlie?
No, looks fine to me.
Just a, just a question, Bob. On the application, you put, uh, the name of applicant is Robert Nahigian. I thought it was both you and your wife.
It is.
So you probably gotta stick your wife's name on there too.
Okay, I can do that.
So Robert and who?
Karen.
Yeah, it's on here.
It's on the plan, but not the application.
Looks like the trust is the owner.
Try to pull a fast one there, huh?
Yes. Yes.
That's right. The name, yeah, yeah, the owner. Put the trust name in here. It was the owner.
That would be Karon.
Application. So what is it?
K A R O N.
K A R O N.
That's pretty cool, huh?
Bilti Trust.
Yes, especially.
It's very cool.
S T.
I love it.
Is it mine?
Address is P O Box one oh.
Fish pond.
Five five.
I don't have the history on it. I don't have no history. I did find that in nineteen seventy seven, they dug this.
Or two, five, five.
They dredged this in nineteen seventy seven.
Yeah.
But since then, it's kind of like.
Or is it eight?
Channel now.
Let's see without my glasses.
Actually, it was gone in six weeks last year.
Two, five, five, six.
Pond went down.
Yeah.
June first, everybody packs their bags and goes under the big pond.
Yeah.
They just leave this, there's no fishing here until like June.
Wow.
Probably gets too hot.
That's exactly.
Yeah.
That is so interesting.
But there's otters, eagles, green heron, blue.
Everything, uh, the, that was cool, the green ones.
Yeah, otters too.
I seen one down there not too long ago.
I have cameras in the pond.
All right.
Jeez, fuck. Jeez, fuck! You didn't sign the applications.
Another point is when we'll be here.
He came in with signed ones this morning.
Come up to the, where the fear is.
But it's Lego fishing, to be honest.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, except on this one, again, we were talking about, we wanted the addresses of the lots and the location. What's the addresses?
That's not the address?
Lot one Hoopole Road and lot two, no, those aren't your street addresses. Those are just your lot numbers.
This guy does a lot of...
Oh, oh, it's eighty-four Hoopole.
He did that, his father did my Y plan when I go house, yeah.
Alright, let's see what else we got here.
We've seen him a lot since...
I'll finish filling them in for you.
Sorry.
Alright, Realty Trust, and it's, uh, eighty-four Hoopole Road.
Wrong again.
That's where he's, the, the member said the location of property was just the two addresses. So you got...
We can do this again in another couple of weeks if you want.
I should, I should have you fill them out right in front of me.
'Cause I'm looking, I'm looking at the dates coming up, you know, so, uh, summer.
Yeah, cancel some of the meetings, maybe.
June, June twenty first, we can all make?
That's the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, we can make that.
Well, I mean, here, here's the thing, if, if, if you don't mind, I can sit down with Bob tomorrow and we can fill it out properly.
Alright, yeah, I don't mind.
And meanwhile, uh, the, the, um... Addresses are what on Hoopole, eighty-four Hoopole, eighty-four Hoopole Road, and four Wheeler Road. Okay, so that takes care of that part.
If it makes sense, if this one just is sitting out there with that, who's gonna have to do it here if you guys are still sticking around or waiting for the next move?
The TV can't tell. There's nobody in the audience, so stop.
I don't know, I don't know if there's another wave.
People, people, people to watch it.
All right, zoning article.
I know, I hate, people have come up to me, "I know you from somewhere." I'm sure it happened.
Went out properly.
Planning Board, do you watch cable, ask local cable, ask us, yep? I'm like, "Yep, that's us."
Eighty-four Hoopole Road.
Yeah, people tell me, we hear this deep voice, we think there's this big guy, when we see this little guy talking.
What's the other one? Wheeler Road.
We think it could be a six-foot tall guy.
Okay, so, so, and then this one you gotta, actually should have used the one I filled out with the, you and your wife. Karen Realty Trust, and this one is, so it's just eighty-four Hoopole Road.
Alright, so June twenty first, we're definitely...
I spent half an hour with this guy this afternoon in my office, so.
We're definitely coming. What's going on July fifth?
I think we should cancel that one, right?
Uh, that's gonna be the last meeting you have me for the summer, so I'm not sure if you really wanna cancel that. So, go fill that out that way. We'll make a yard copies of it.
That's my birthday, and I'd rather cancel it.
You always have a birthday in July.
July nineteenth.
You always told me it was July fourth.
No, July nineteenth.
I know, you always canceled the July fourth.
Yeah, we want to come July fourth to the meeting.
Mary, you wanna sign the form N that you received?
And then it's August second and August sixteenth, okay, for everybody? It is for me?
Yep.
Well, I won't be here, so again, I'm not sure what you're gonna do to create an agenda. You'll have to figure something out. What's that? You want a pen? Uh, here's one.
I have one, it doesn't work.
Oh, okay.
Charlie, you around July fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully the traffic will be gone by then.
Isn't that like the peak week? Uh, oh, I mean getting over the bridge from the weekend. Alright, so July nineteenth, we'll cancel?
Yep. You all set with that?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep. July, what's the other date?
I think we're sticking with June twenty first and July fifth, then the next two dates are August second, August sixteenth. So we're gonna meet on those dates. There is a part-time staff person in the planning, uh, department, and, uh, we're gonna have to...
She won't be coming to meetings, so I don't know how we're gonna set up for your meeting and all the rest.
Right, but, uh, Jen will be here to take minutes. We have Renee to do the, the, you know, the videographing. I mean, I'm just gonna have to coordinate with the town administrator's office, 'cause they know you're gonna be out. So...
Um, you'll have to prepare agendas now. The usual deal with the agenda is, you know, various items on here, like the, the correspondence is something that comes into the office.
August second to the sixteenth, we're coming.
Yeah, you should send me, you should send me the, the agenda from tonight in Word, and then I'll have to...
Well, you always get it. I mean, you've gotten it.
I get it in Word? Okay, it's not PDF, yeah. And then I, I had to post an agenda once. I sent it to Debbie Dammie, and she took care of it for me. She understood that I was not here, you know, even I wasn't physically at town hall, and she took care of it. So, alright. So Tom, what are the dates you're out?
Uh, July fifteenth to August twenty eighth, I'll be back. So you'll have two meetings in August without me. Hopefully nobody will apply for anything, and you won't need the meetings, but, uh, in case.
Alright, so... Alright, now I've lost my agenda. Do we have to sign these plans?
Yes. One person has to sign the plans.
Make a motion and pull not required.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aye.
Mary, did you sign that form N? Mary, it's probably the one I passed over there. Oh, got it back already. Okay, never mind. It's too quick for me.
Just Mary has to sign it, right, Tom?
Yeah, just one authorized member. And we've got, yeah, the paper ones. I'm trying to be so unhelpful. I'm just trying to get this paperwork done. Fifty-seven. What's it look like? Let's see what it looks like. Karen and Karen Realty Trust, four Wheeler Road. Okay.
Two copies of this? Did I mess up, did I mess up the N?
Radio.
Did I mess up the N for?
No, the N's fine. I fixed, I fixed it. I fixed it. I stuck in the addresses in front of Hoopole and Wheeler there.
It's a forty-hour week, 'cause you know, they don't let you, one hour, you know, one day here, one day there. All the businesses are just kind of flipping out because...
Acquired.
Now they have people that work with them, and why do they have to pay that much money, you know? That's not a bad, that was the lady that owns the franchise of that chick-fil-a she did it.
Oh, just that franchise?
Yeah, from that one in here, okay. I don't know if the other one, but she only owns that one.
That's a pretty good seller.
Yeah, that's not bad, you know? But, like she says, I pay that, if I pay that, I'm gonna get a better quality person. You know, that's willing to work. He's not gonna come in one day and say, "I, I can't work tomorrow," you know? Which is true, you know, you pay somebody good, you know, decent way, they gotta work for you. I gotta go to sell.
That's a good paper.
Not that, not that bad, you know?
Paper clip playing around anywhere?
Yeah, I do. Oh, I have a clip. It's not a paper clip.
Alright, I'm just gonna go get a folder.
Like one out of five, I'd brag her. She pushed my son's out. She gets like, uh, she just wants to stay home and like, watch movies, it's the age. Alright, so Tom will give you what you're supposed to take. I think it's the Mylar, but I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay, great.
And assign, take the paper ones, take the Mylar. And record. Good to go. Right. Thank you, everybody.
Aye, good luck with that. Sure, that will get scooped up quickly.
Are you?
Good.
Now, look at the way you're rolling it again.
Bye, good night.
Night, Bob.
Alright, so the next item is a divi- definitive subdivision plan. Oh, status of B C D M Aquway Highlands, any news?
Yes, uh, I have been told that the property has been sold.
Holy smokes!
And you've met the owner before. He's a fellow that came in. His name is Jacques Morin. He's a guy that came in with that zoning article relative to increasing lot coverage to twenty-five percent on smaller lots under ten thousand square feet in town. So you've met him there at the meeting, and, uh, he, I forget the name of his construction company, but according to all people in the neighborhood, he is, uh, uh, the new owner. And I told him to contact Charlie. I don't know if he's talked to you or not, but he's graded the road, and they're all very happy out there.
Not much.
Not much? Oh, well.
I drove it just the other day.
Oh, you did, I...
It's still full of potholes.
Yeah. Alright, well, any case, that's what the neighbors told me.
Not that I could see.
You're kidding me?
They might have run it, run a grader or a blade across it at one point or another, but when you grade it flat, potholes develop almost overnight.
Yeah.
Oh, because of the water?
It's, yeah. So it's just as bad almost as it was at the beginning. And there was no, on the connector road between, uh, DeGrasse and Blue Castle.
Nothing there, yeah.
Nothing there yet.
Alright. Well, we do know the Habitat got their lot.
Oh, that's good.
Yes. Uh, alright, so new business is proposed zoning articles. Okay, so...
So you've got, uh, five articles there, uh, a couple of which you've already voted to put on the warrant. I don't know if you, you were here, Mary, but they're not in the, the order, uh, my administrative assistant.
Alright, I have four articles.
There should be five in your pile.
What ones do you have?
What ones do I have? I hope I have all the ones that I gave the secretary here. Um, wait a second, this is my folder.
I have the six-month to the twelve-month.
I got five.
Oh, you do? Oh, I'm sorry, there's five, alright. So which ones did we vote on already?
The ones you voted on already were the, uh... The car wash item and the, uh, like I say, twenty to twenty-five percent that Mr. Morin proposed. Those, according to my records, are the ones that you did vote to put on the warrant. And that's to put the car wa- allow car washes in C two and I one industrial zones.
Car wash, okay.
Yep, and the other one was to, um, allow that, uh, single-family residential lots, uh, having ten thousand square feet or less, uh, have twenty-five percent maximum lot coverage, rather than the twenty percent they're stuck with now. So those two were voted on a couple of months ago. There's three others, um...
The six-month, alright, so let's do that one.
Yeah, why don't you start with the six-month? That's the latest one. And I only found out about this, uh, through the building inspector, who happened to run across, uh, an article in a, in a building journal. Uh, legislature apparently last year changed the, uh, zoning act, zoning bylaws, zoning statute, I should say, uh, to increase the, uh, amount of time, uh, that you have to use a building permit or a special permit from six to twelve months, without fear of a zoning change that could nullify the project. And that's, I think, referring to special permits like for a use or whatever.
Yeah.
And then it extended the length of time to, uh, make use, make substantial use of the special permit without lapse from two years to three years now. So this article basically is just making our zoning bylaw conform with these new, uh, provisions of the state law that went into effect, uh, January first.
Alright.
We don't really have a choice because...
We just pass it.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is the zoning act, not the subdivision control, uh, control law.
Okay. Okay, I, I'm fine with that. Is everybody else fine with that? Um, so, so do we need a motion to schedule public hearing on this?
No, 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 no. What you're voting on is whether or not you wanna, gonna submit these for, to the selectmen for, uh...
Their approval.
The October town meeting. Not for their approval, they just have to put it on the warrant.
Make a motion to approve article, I don't know the number.
Vote to submit, uh, this article relative to, uh, the, uh, length of time that you have to use building permits and special permits. Just can call it that for the record. They don't have numbers. They only get numbers and, once they're on the warrant, and the selectmen put together a, a full warrant.
Make a motion, we accept this.
We refer this to the board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen.
To place on the next town meeting warrant?
Town meeting, with the change from two years to three years, and from six months to twelve months.
Yeah.
The amendment.
That's what it is.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aye. Okay. Alright, the trailer, um, let's do the RV one, okay?
That's the one that the building inspector, uh, proposed. And, um, now you've brought some stuff in, I guess. Uh, what I did, as I said I would, was I called Dick Terry, Richard Terry, who was on the, you, the board of selectmen of the planning board and the, uh, the, um, growth study committee back in nineteen eighty-three. The planning board and that, that study committee jointly submitted the article that created this requirement in the first place. Um, at the time, it was actually, uh, required a special permit. It was modified in the late nineties to a plan review, in order to store one travel trailer, et cetera, on your property. What this article does is, has some similar language, a store, but it allows one travel trailer, camping trailer, or RV, I've added, provided it not be used for human habitation while so stored, which is in the current language, and provided the location of such storage should not be within, I'm saying ten feet, as opposed to it said, within any setbacks. Be forty feet in the front, fifteen feet on the side, be hard to fit it on the property. So I use ten feet as a reasonable distance from your neighbor's property line to store one of these things. And by replacing the plan review to, with the letter Y, meaning you can have that one by right. Uh, because, uh, as in the explanation here, um, this has been on the books since nineteen eighty-three, and apparently it's, nobody's ever applied for the permit, yet they're all over town, which is why the building inspector was bringing this in, because he had one, poor guy that actually came in and applied for a permit, and it blew his mind that you needed a permit, uh, to do, to park a, a travel trailer.
I have a...
I think that we had some discussion that we weren't comfortable about just making it a, a yes, that we wanted to put some...
Well, right now, it's plan review. It's, I mean, it's not a yes, it's not a special permit. It's a plan review, but that's what's not been happening.
That's fine, that's not, we're not the enforcement, but we had some discussion about not automatically putting it to a yes unless it's a certain size, under a certain size or a certain type. So did I give you a copy of this, Tom? So Joe?
No, I don't see one, but...
Joe found this online to give us some verbiage to put in there. I think that, um, there are some instances where people have been bothered by, um, um, these larger, like Class A, Class C, the fifth-wheeled trailer, um, that kind of stuff. But you can see like a, a travel, these aren't in the same order, but the travel trailer and a folding camping trailer, probably a non, that can be an automatic yes. But these larger ones, I think we should still keep, uh, as, um, plan review. That way, if he is being annoying and actually living in there, there's, there's some place for, for people to go.
Well, I mean, the bylaw now, when proposed, doesn't allow anybody to live in them, period.
But I think it just adds more protection.
What about...
Well, we'd have to create two categories in the zoning, and we'd have to have two uses then. One for the one thing that you wanna allow by right, the smaller stuff, it sounds like, and then a new one for larger stuff. We have to come, some kind of definition, 'cause I don't know if any of these sort of descriptions are generic enough that, uh, um, anybody would recognize what they are. Maybe they're Class A and Class C.
Or it could be by, by lengths.
Length or weight.
Yeah, I mean, you could come up with something like that.
What about if...
The, uh, the, the, the bottom line was, though, is that they're out there all over the place, and it's an enforcement issue. The building inspector isn't able to enforce what we've got now, so...
I don't wanna, I don't wanna change it based on that.
It's not gonna be enforcing anything anyways, because they just happen.
I hate changing the bylaw, because there's no enforcement agent. I mean, that's just not the point of the bylaw.
I have a question here. What about if, like, my house had a fire, and I had a, I rent one of these trailers?
You're allowed to do that. You're allowed, it's, it's, it's in the zoning bylaw, though, that you can actually have a motor home, uh, or a, a trailer, uh, for temporary residence, a mobile home.
That's still allowed, I'm sure.
Yeah, while your house is under, and I think that's limited to a year.
Yeah.
So maybe anything under twenty feet is okay without...
Twenty feet is a car.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just looking at these. Class A is thirty to forty feet, Class C is twenty to twenty-five. The travel trailer.
Is up to thirty-five feet, a travel trailer.
That's right, so that.
Yeah, see, that's.
The can, the, the, the van is seventeen to nineteen feet.
That's a, that's a regular car, like.
Yeah, it's just a van. Just the length of my Dodge Grand Caravan. So you wanna come up with a, a length you can agree to? Um, I suppose I could, I suppose I could mash it into, uh, one item where it says, uh, um, ah, I don't know how I would do this. It would have to say in the text, like, the, the smaller things are allowed by right. And then the bigger things would require a plan review and then it'd be a sort of a Y slash PR, I guess, in the column. It could be done that way.
So you wanna do twenty feet, twenty-one feet, twenty-two feet?
Ah, no, I gotta.
At least twenty-five.
I think we need to be somewhere in the.
Twenty-five at least.
Like thirty foot range.
Thirty, okay.
Or you could do it by weight.
The, yeah, the weight seems to be.
Well, length, length's a lot easier to measure for, if you're enforcing something, it's a lot easier to measure something on the ground than to weigh it.
Twenty-five?
So I, I would, I would stick with the length.
Well, yeah, well, the weight, they usually have a plaque on them.
Yeah.
But the plaque could be missing.
Whatever, yeah.
It'd be on the registration.
Sure.
Yeah, if they were registered, yeah.
Yeah.
But maybe length may be the easiest.
I think thirty feet, thirty?
Thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty sounds, because I had, I had a thirty foot travel trailer.
Oh, okay, alright.
No, but twenty-five is.
Too small?
Twenty-five is too close to the car.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would eliminate.
The class C.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
See, that would fit in the.
Thirty is a breaking point. Is it thirty and below by right or?
Yep.
Thirty below.
Okay, so thirty and lower.
Yeah, and, and that would allow people.
Why, and then over.
The folding trailers.
Thirty, my interview.
The ones that come out.
Yeah.
They're, they're smaller, but, you know.
Bump outs.
Alright, I'll try to rewrite that for the next meeting then and
Okay.
I'll send off the, building inspector liked the way I had it, but, uh, we'll, we'll have to like the new way then too.
Alright, the next one is of the old, let's see, da, 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 da.
The last one is the four stories and fifty feet for hotel, and that's the one where you brought in your design things. And you can see the way I wrote it up, uh, I specifically referenced, uh, the guidelines, you talked about contextual design on Cape Cod, uh, that the Cape Cod commission applies to larger structures. Otherwise, you look through the, the whole design book, there isn't a four story building in it, so.
No, I, I was doing the truth.
But it's for larger structures and it gives you some guidelines on.
I'm fine with this myself.
Can I have, um, until next meeting to take the vote? Cause I haven't studied it.
Yeah, we have time, right?
I think I'm fine with it, but I just.
We have time next meeting, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, the, 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 the first week of July is the, I forget the date, by tenth, maybe, or something like that.
So the big, the big thing is, this is, this is how we use this document a lot, is, um, breaking up the roof line to make things just look smaller, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, and that just softens it as you're approaching it on the street. And there's some good recommendations on, uh, like the landscaping. So this just shows everybody that, yeah, we care what it looks like. You know, spend some money on your landscape architect and your regular actor.
There's something missing. The, it's listed on the, on my agenda, but there isn't a copy of the article in here. It is the one to allow drive-through facilities in the C two zoning district. Did we vote on that one before?
I thought we did.
Is that the one?
Discussing it.
Okay, so.
What did we say?
I don't recall.
Was I to think about that more?
No, I thought, cause they, we were saying how they already have one here.
No, but I, I was supposed to, I was supposed to reach out to the chamber. I wanted the chamber's input.
Alright, so.
So, yeah, we need, I need that ASAP so that I can send it to the chamber.
Okay.
Talked about minimum watt sizes, circulation and.
Uh, well, they're allowed in C one now and there's none of that in the requirements, so I'm not sure why you'd make that. C two. Well, I mean, there's, they both have the same minimum watt size.
It was really small lately.
Whether it's C one or C two.
To go like really early in the morning to get coffee now. Alright, so the, the drive-through.
Okay, you guys can, um, so you wanna continue your discussion about the four stories?
Yep, and the drive-through one, right?
Yeah.
And theoretically, we're gonna continuing the building.
RV, so this will be three more on our next.
Now, um.
We didn't vote on the RV?
No, cause he has to rewrite it.
Oh.
He, we, we should have let him rewrite it.
You gave me, you gave me the idea of what to put in it.
Okay, I got that, alright.
Alright, and then, uh, I, I can, um, if, either after the meeting or if you wanna go on to other things you don't need me for, I can go to my computer and try to find that, uh, that drive-through article and print it out for you, Mary.
Yeah, go ahead, we're good.
I'll print it out for everybody.
Do you have any bills?
Yeah, we got Charlie's.
We have, Charlie has a bill right here for, it's just, uh, planning board stuff, no southboard stuff. Hasn't made any southboard bills since last December.
I haven't been there.
Yeah, so, it's amazing.
So, this is for eight hundred twelve dollars, fifty cents for.
Okay, so that's.
May.
Make a motion to pay Charlie Riley's bill for May for eight hundred.
Seventeen dollars.
Seventeen dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There'll, there'll probably be a, there will be a small one for the month of June, uh, which I'll get into, Tom, for the July fifth meeting. But if you're not gonna meet in August, um, I doubt that there'll be much to bill anyway.
Yeah.
The only one that's ongoing right now is Northbridge. And a lot of the drainage is already installed and ready to go and they're working on the water, which is with the water inspectors anyway, so I don't get involved with that. So. They're going right to town, aren't they? They're very busy. Yeah.
I saw you up there la- last week, there was a group of you there. Was there any, is Jillio, Doug, he's a clerk?
He's assisting the superintendent on the site.
Oh.
Cause once the building gets started, there'll be a, a bunch of trades come in.
Yeah.
And the place is gonna be like a zoo out there to get everybody on the site and trucks in and stuff going, yeah. Last time I was there, they were digging, uh, footings out for the foundations, so.
Alright, um, reorganization.
We should break, uh, I mean, we can keep.
You wanna wait?
I don't know, I, I mean, if you wanna wait for David, I mean, I vote, you win for chairman and Joe for vice chair, and if Dave wants to be clerk.
That sounds a great slate.
Yep. You, you don't mind being clerk? You don't have to do it.
You can do the minutes if Jen's not here.
Dave is the clerk, right? But he's not gonna come.
He's the vice chair.
Oh, vice, oh.
Let's have Joe be vice chair.
You don't mind, Joe?
Alright.
So you make the motion, I think you should second it. I don't think I should second my toughest chair.
Second it, Dave. Unless you don't wanna be chair, I mean, uh, clerk, you look at that.
No, I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done. So, I didn't wanna be chair this year, but I will because of so many transitions.
Yeah, I know, that's why.
And I have, I, I do work in a planning department, so I have some resources if I have to jump in. Um, so, okay.
You wanna wait on this one, Mary, or you wanna do this one now, the, the drive-through?
No, I gotta, I'm gonna send it to the chamber.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry, yep, that's.
Yeah, now, this is, this would apply, just to be clear, on the, in the C two zones along Route one fifty-one, basically Andy's Market area and down in the, uh, area of, uh, Bowden Road and all that, that C two zone. The other C two zone, which is here around Town Hall, um, is excluded because it's not allowed in the Mashpee Center Ovaly District, which is sort of our historic center of town and we don't wanna see drive-throughs here. So that Dunkin' Donuts over there that created all the hullabaloo, that created the historic district, will still not be legal.
Yeah.
Alright, so, the next thing is, um, Chair's report on the planning department staffing. So David and I met with town manager Rodney Collins and assistant town manager Wayne Taylor today for, we had a good meeting and we talked about, um, upcoming changes in the staffing for the planning department, um, in that Tom is planning to retire. Still January?
Yes.
Still January. Um, so we talked about, um, the transitioning of that, uh, department to a new town planner, et cetera. So we do have a part-time, we have, right now, we have Tom Padilla, a full-time planner, part-time, then we have a town, uh, part-time administrative assistant. And her name is Marie?
Maria Silva.
Maria Silva.
Maria.
Maria?
I keep missing the "a", so.
Oh, yeah.
Maria Silva.
Maria, though, you gotta say that, cause I get, you know.
So she's up to nineteen hours?
Nineteen hours, yeah.
Nineteen hours.
Part-time.
Silva.
Silva.
Silva, yes.
Um.
Portuguese.
So going out, we figured, we, we looked at what the union contract has for, um, to, the starting salary for a new person and it's round pay parity to what right now is being advertised for other, uh, town planners. So Town of Bonstable is looking for a town planner right now, sixty-nine thousand a year.
They're looking for which, which, which planner?
I think that's, uh, um.
Cause they have, uh, a community development director or whatever that is, uh, the head of their planning.
Simple planner.
Yeah, that's not the town planner. It's not an equal, equivalent position, that's like an assistant planner.
And then we have, um, we have a staff planner, post, position posting for Middleborough, seventy-nine thousand.
Again, that's not probably the.
Town planner.
Head planner.
Town planner and planning department. I think that is a town planner and then.
Staff planner?
Well, it says up here, staff planner, position posting, and the position is town planner and planning department.
Okay.
That's seventy-nine thousand, that's Middleborough. And then Lexington, it's an entry level planner, thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's.
So.
Not even close.
Right, but that's what the union contract had. The union contract is.
I know, the union contract has always been about twenty thousand dollars low for the assistant planner and I'm below my, my peers and my, my step around the Cape, certainly in the adjacent towns. So you're talking about the, the town planner or the assistant planner? Because we have, both full-time positions are authorized by town meeting and.
But the position that's gonna be advertised to replace you is seventy-three thousand to seventy-nine thousand a year. And that's the, that, well, that's the union contract, that's set by the union contract. He read that off.
But then it was supposed to, as of July, it was gonna.
It was gonna go up?
Go up.
I don't know if it's up, two percent? He didn't tell us that.
Two percent.
So it's a, there's a cola raise of two percent. So, I mean, it is what it is, it's what the union contract has and I think it will get, uh, you know, interest. So we talked about scheduling that, um, advertisement in September, right? So that there can be some, cause it will take a while to get the applications in, interview people, make an offer and then have them resign from their other job and then overlap with Tom.
Well, how can we have two town planners at the same time? There's only one position.
So what they're thinking of doing is having a memorandum of agreement with this person coming in, that they would be offered, uh, the town planner position once you're retired. So they would work as the assistant town planner, um, until you retire. So there could be some overlap. He thinks there's.
At what salary level? Cause that's a much lower salary level.
No, I told him, is he, are they gonna get paid this amount? They said, yes, they feel they can do that through a memorandum of agreement.
With the union?
He, he said he had to talk to the union agent.
Yeah, they would have to, I would think.
But I think he was comfortable that they could go forward and use a memorandum of agreement to spell out for this new person what's gonna happen.
So then what happens with the assistant planner position?
Assistant planner position, that budget would be used, um, for, for, you know, hopefully paying part of the, the new person while there's an overlap. And, you know, I think there was an offer to have you stay on as a consultant.
So we wouldn't have an assistant planner then, once I'm gone?
Not, not if you're, if, not if you're working kinda part-time.
Well, I mean, there isn't enough money in there for, to have an assistant planner if you're overlapping to begin with.
This point, what we have in the bylaw, I mean, um, by town meeting vote, we have three full-time positions authorized, but they're not fully funded, right? There were two that have only part-time funded and one that's full-time funded. So I told Rodney that, you know, I didn't participate in the financial, uh, finance committee discussions leading up to this current budget, but that I would be more active next year and I would be pushing for that assistant town planner position to be funded full-time. But we did not get an agreement, we did not get a commitment from him that, uh, at this time.
Even though town meeting voted two years ago to fully fund the assistant planner on the basis of freeing me up to work on sewer and actually working on the comprehensive plan, it's been in the budget for the last two years, it was taken out of the budget this year just as the position was recreated, so called.
Right, we didn't get, we didn't get a commitment from him.
It's not like we, we, we got a budget increase, we got a budget cut.
But he did, also didn't say no. He also didn't say definitively no, forget it. He said that he wanted to see how it was gonna play out. And I was like, well, you're gonna find out right away how it's gonna play out, right? So, um, so that's it. I did tell them that they should expect, um, to have, um, some contingency plans if, if during the transition. Um, also, um, to become familiar with how, um, they pay Charlie, right, how that's all done. I did encourage them to, um, you know, look at, uh, a, a P and T, you know, professional and technical budget line, uh, for consultants if that's, uh, something they wanna go in that direction instead of having, um, a full-time assistant town planner. They might wanna use consultants instead, so.
To do what?
To function in the, um, planning department. So, he said that he would think of, he would think about stuff, he would think about stuff, he didn't say no to anything, um.
What, what happens when Charlie retires?
Well, I did.
Which I'm not speaking for him, but.
I did say that I did hear a rumor.
Well, it's gonna happen sometime.
Right, um, and they did talk about, uh, you know, maybe relying on you a little bit more, especially when Tom's out for the six weeks during the summer, so.
Well, I certainly can fill in where I, where I can. A lot of what Tom does, uh, I don't touch at all.
Right.
Yeah.
But if, if there are things that come about, if somebody comes in with an application and they need to sit down with somebody that knows a little bit.
Okay.
You know, I can help out that way. Um, one of the things you could think about too is, um, opening up, uh, your rules and regulations. I don't think the subdivision rules and regulations say anything about it, but, um, if you have fifty-three G accounts for consultants.
Right.
Then, if a, if a filing came in, for example, if I'm still around doing this stuff, I would pick up a copy of the plans, give you an estimate as to what I think it's gonna cost to do the review.
Okay.
Sit with the board, just as I do now, do the inspections, um, and give you a number that would cover the cost of the review, the sitting in and the inspections. I typically would do that in two pieces, not knowing exactly how the final plan will look.
Right.
That would, that would eliminate really the, uh, item that you have in your budget that pays me right now.
Well, the thing about the, Charlie's position, it is an actual town position.
Okay.
Planning board consulting engineer appointed by the planning board.
That's, that's the way I work and wear it.
It's not just a consultant, it's, he's an official town position in the, in the town bylaws.
But for funding it.
And you do have fifty-three G in your subdivision, so you could hire extra people if you wanted, but you don't have any money in your budget to do that. I mean, Charlie's been working at a very low generous rate and nobody else is gonna take that kinda money to do the work, so.
But all I'm suggesting is that, in, instead of, instead of taking the budget item which you get every year and paying me out of that budget, it could be done under the fifty-three G account where. Where the estimate gets given to the board, it gets transmitted to the applicant, he cuts a check payable to the town, it goes into a S R account in the town. And I get paid out of that account, so it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, affect your budget. I mean, that's, that's an amount of money that could perhaps go to your planning.
So we brought that up a little bit, and I saw that they were taking notes about fifty-three G, so.
The one, the one thing that I would suggest though is that, you're gonna want both, really. Because you're gonna want somebody like Charlie for all these little things, you're not gonna do a separate account every time an A and R plan comes in to be worked out and all the rest. Maybe for your big special permit projects, you wanna bring in a consultant, that's the way it's usually used, not for every last little thing that comes into the board that you need some engineering or surveying expertise on. So I think you still need that position filled with somebody that's doing what Charlie's doing, and if you, big project, you wanna bring in consultants, that's what fifty-three G is, is gonna do for you. So it wouldn't replace your little seven thousand dollar, whatever it is, line item, it would be in addition to that, I would say.
No, but I think that, um, while you're gone for six weeks, they might use that, they might do that. That might be something, I mean, we're not, you're not anticipating any new applications.
I know, but I mean.
But they can just walk in.
They can, they can walk in, but I mean, you're not gonna have time to advertise for consultants to do that before I leave. And by the way, both your special permit and your subdivision regulations have fifty-three G sections in them, so.
Well, you're budgeted, you've got a proposed budget for the next fiscal year anyway.
Not yet. Oh, yeah, that's exactly, it was frozen, it was frozen at exactly what you've got this year.
Yeah, so that, that covers it at least for the short term, until you figure out what you're gonna do.
I mean, that will be the town manager's office problem to figure out, I'm sure they will, but. So I'll, I'll kinda pass that on, and maybe I'll have Rodney give you a call, or Wayne give you a call to kinda firm that up, so they know, they understand a little bit more.
Just wanna know I'd be willing to drop by and, you know, we could sit down and chat while I'm here, it's sometimes easier than doing it over the phone.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, they, they also, uh, want one to two planning board members to be on the selection committee for the new planner, just somebody that's interested in doing that. Happy to do it?
I'll do it, I'll.
You wanna do it? David or Joe, do you wanna, I mean, I don't care.
Well.
I'll do it.
Is that good with, have these two do it? Yay, congratulations!
That's, this is a nice chair, you gotta.
And you're technical, and you have the background of the contractor, so that will be good.
And I wanna ask him some hard questions.
You got it, and what he said was that each member of the planning board should, like, suggest a question or two, and the selection committee can use those as kind of a base. And you'll see, the Human, uh, Resources Department has the form, and, cause I've done it before, and they go through, and they have these set questions, and there's set questions for everybody. So it's very, um, alright, and I think that's, right now, that's my report on that. So onward, and.
I just had one thing.
When we do, when the Finance Committee start, they'll start working on next year's budget now, so I will be looking for people to come with me to the Finance Committee, to kinda be like, ah, you need to make sure this budget is nice. And is giving the Planning Department what it needs, alright, um.
Could I, could I just, before I, I forget, um, you know, that I've been working, there, there, there's a big zoning article that's supposed to be coming down the path for Mashpee Commons.
Yeah.
I drafted up what I thought was a very generous thing, that accomplished everything they wanted to do, but was consistent with our, you know, our normal principles for subdivisions and open space and, uh, affordable housing requirements. They came back with something totally different, and that's where we stand now, um.
They don't wanna do the forty B, I heard.
Yeah, they say they can't afford to, there, I don't wanna get into any more of the discussions that we had, but in any case, there is, uh, um, there is the talk of the, not the planning board, but the selectmen being the one that put an article on the warrant. Um, because they, uh, may not have it, anything ready before, uh, the deadline for articles, and only the selectmen can add other stuff, uh, afterwards. Um, they, uh, there's a guy named, uh, Simon, I forget his first name.
Tony?
Is Tony Simon, that's been in touch with Mary, he asked for all of your contact information, the rest of the board members today, which I gave him.
I get it, I get it, address that issue.
A couple members in at a time, um.
I, I don't think that's gonna pass open meeting law.
What, two members? Oh, sequentially discussing the issue, well.
But anyway, yes, so they are discussing, I, you know, I think it's pretty clear that if there was a zoning bylaw that the planning board didn't work on and didn't like, there's not a lot of chance of that, uh, being well-received. It, it could pass, but I think that, um, that would just look very odd, um, at town meeting. And that's not what, um, that's not what the town really wants to project, we wanna project something that's unified. Um, I, I do have a draft of, uh, the bylaw, I asked Tony and Simon to send it to me.
Which one? Oh, which, which, which version?
I, I can email it to you and you.
Well, no, that's the, probably the thing that they're drafted up that isn't really a bylaw.
Oh, um.
And I sent you the one I did, so you got that.
I did mention this to, with David, uh, to Rodney today, and I'm glad you brought it up, cause I forgot to report on it. And I did give him a little bit of background about, remember the de- development agreement we went through, and, um, how things were on the table, and they were taken off the table, and they were told they were, people told us they were gonna bring it back to the table, and they never came back to us. And they withdrew from the, uh, they got a bylaw change that they really wanted, and they dropped the development agreement.
That's what they always do.
So, um.
Didn't.
If Rodney had heard that before, it really sunk in today.
Didn't the state give them money to do that road, because they were gonna do a forty B?
Yes, and they say that even with the state funding, they, they, they're losing money on those buildings.
But don't they have to pay the state back, cause they?
No, 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 that's, money came to the town, that's why it was laid out as a town road, that section of road, it was a, it was a grant that came to the town, that, no, they don't pay it back, it wasn't even.
I talked to Rodney and Wayne about how this is a pretty ambitious goal of having this on October town meeting warrant. Um, um, they said that they could, uh, put in a placeholder, uh, and hold something open until mid-September, but I'm still not sure that, uh, we would, we would get there. Um, I updated Rodney, and I told him about the, the Greenway proposal, right? So I think I need to send him that stuff, because I don't think he thought of all of that coming together, he was very interested in listening to us about that. Um, kind of like, uh, the dream list of things that the planning board has always asked from Mashpee Commons. Um, he was, he, his comment was, oh, you should be at these meetings. So, about these meetings, I, you know, um, I guess there's some stuff that Mashpee Commons does not want to, they're not, it's too draft to kinda talk about, um, in an open forum. They proposed kind of meeting with us individually or in pairs, but I don't think that passes, driving here, driving back to Mashpee today, thinking about it, don't think that passes open meeting law.
No, I think we should have an open meeting.
So I think that, um, now, I'm, now, as a couple of hours have passed, you know, and, and meeting with you tonight, I'm thinking that they should, they should start doing workshop meetings with us.
Yeah.
Uh, like we did before, um, and we talk about things, and of course, we have members that have always, uh, I don't wanna speak for you Dennis, but always very curious about their master plan.
Well, what I know, since I've been wrestling them, they come up with a master plan, just like where they're gonna put the box center in, and we changed the zoning, and the box center took a couple of years, all of a sudden, that won't fit in our plan.
You approved a special permit for the box center, and it went through the D R I process too, it was all permitted, yeah.
And then they changed, after they got their zoning changed, same thing with, when they started out, they showed us my plan, and I don't know if you, I put Tom O'Hara first guy, goes, watch Tom, they're gonna show us this plan, and about eight months later, they're gonna come with a different plan, what they should've showed us in the first place. They, they get what they want, and then they change it, I don't think we should lose the forty Bs, cause.
Well, you know.
Well, you can't force them to build a forty B, I mean, if they can't build it, they can't build it, and they're starting from scratch with.
But if they did a local initiative program, chapter forty B, which I always told Doug Storrs to do, then you have more flexibility and you can get, cause what they have is a, is a chapter forty B, not through the local initiative program.
Well, I'm not sure if it didn't go through the selectmen, I think it was a so-called friendly forty B. They do have, uh, the subsidy list is a New England fund, but I mean, um.
I'll have to, I'll, I'll have to check with them, because you can have a chapter forty B that, that gets some, so anyways, typically in chapter forty B, uh, ten percent of all your units have to be three-bedroom, okay? When you go through the local initiative program, you can really push for something different. But the whole town, including the planning board, has to be involved in that, and give the state a real reason why you're saying, um, you know, we want some studio units. It's okay, some of these smaller units are okay, I mean, there are things you can do to.
Well, it isn't even so much the type of units, it's the twenty-five percent that they don't wanna do, um.
But it, but, and what I'm saying is, a studio is a lot less.
Economically, they say it doesn't work, I'm having trouble getting them to do ten percent, which is what I wrote into my version of the new bylaw.
What about the O S I D, remember that, what I think, I don't know if you, you could transfer it, may have to get more density.
That's, that's what I wrote, but much simpler form than the O S I D.
Alright, because they always talked about doing that, and they never wanted to do it, you know?
They don't wanna do the open space.
No.
So, anyhow, um.
They are a nice developer though, they do a nice job, I gotta give them that much.
Oh, yeah, no, it's beautiful, um, typically, when somebody says it's not financially feasible, the response is, okay, let's see your pro forma. Um, and then, um, you can have, you can look at that pro forma to see really, if the, if the, if their estimations are right, so.
There's, there's just one mystery to me in this whole discussion about, um, you know, costs and, and, and all of that stuff, and, and, you know, excessive regulation requirements on a lot of that stuff. Is that they've had a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for thirty-one years, for the main Mashpee Commons, including buildings all around the common and all the way up Steeple Street, and it has no open space requirements, no affordable housing requirements, that they have never built it. Why is that? And, you know, part of the, part of the way they've got the town manager all excited about it is they're gonna bring in tax base, but I mean, they got a permit, but they haven't built it, and so no tax bases happened in thirty-one years, based on a permit that had no requirements on it at all for any kind of, you know, benefits of the town, so.
Yeah, no, that's right, I see that.
You know, it's just hard to, but again, I don't wanna get too much into it because.
No, we should wait, you know.
Well, I'll, um, I'll, um, I was gonna call the Attorney General's Office, just to let them know what, what we should do, and, um, then I can call them back, and it's probably gonna be, no, you have to have a workshop meeting where the public has access to. And then we'll go from there.
Okay.
It is a new team, I've never worked with, uh, these people from Mashpee Commons, that's Tony Simon before, but, um.
Yeah, now, now, I mean, one of the other, one of the, one of, one, he's more the, he's a public relations guy, he's, you know, you got, uh, Tom Ferrante, you know, who's the construction guy that, and you got John Connell, you've met maybe a couple of times, he's sort of the architect. They had this guy Russell Preston, that's come in as the zoning bylaw guy, uh, and it's all this form-based zoning and all of that stuff, and getting rid of all of the use regulations and the dimensional regulations and all the rest, and.
I'd, I'd like to have no zoning too, right? I mean, it's like, I don't, I'm not sure how far I go with that, but, um, I've, I'm, I'm keeping an open mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Tom Ferrante, and what's John's, John who?
Connell, C O N N E L, no.
So anyways, I just wanna tell you, from my experience.
They're all good guys, and, and, you know, but, um.
There's been an initiative, there's, there's been a lot of consultants and land use attorneys who have been trying to break chapter forty B, come back in, um, get num, get percentages reduced, um, that kind of stuff. So there's, I don't know if they've all gone to a training, they're like, oh, this is the new thing to do, and say it's too expensive, um, but, no.
It's funny, in the past, it was mostly towns trying to get rid of forty B because it was too much of a giveaway to the developers.
Well, I think some of them work, some of them work well, and I, I, I feel bad that theirs, they don't see how that one will work, but, um, anyways, I, I haven't had a serious conversation with them to try to, what they could do to modify it that would make it work for them, and serve our population better.
Um, just, just so you know, we had a meeting the other day, uh, where we did our conversation, uh, about the version of the zoning that I had drafted up versus what, uh, they, they sent back. Um, and their people were there, buffing their staff, um, you had the town manager and the assistant town manager, and you had two selectmen, uh, Tom O'Hara and, uh, Andy Gottlieb, who were there. Um, and you know, one of the concepts for a committee, if they didn't wanna do an open meeting, would be to have two planning board members just to, you know, become part of a, a committee.
You know what, that, it, you, you shouldn't have told me that the selectmen were there, without us.
Well, I mean, this.
We are the land use board, hello, so who was there, Andy and who?
Tom O'Hara.
So, he's the chairman now, right?
Yeah, he's the chairman.
The chair.
But I mean, uh, I wasn't saying that in a negative way, it's just that there was a con, it's a concept of how to set up a, a committee to develop it, is to, to just have two board members and, and rather than the rest. Now, they, they discussed that too, about how do we.
Problem is, is when, it's like, if I go, then you go, then Dennis goes, and David goes, and I think that's the problem.
Yeah, yeah, but one of the things that was also discussed was, well, wait a second, that's just the two of us, our opinion, and we don't know what the other three's opinions are gonna do, it might be totally different, so that was sort of part of the problem with just having two members on a committee, so. I don't know where it's gonna go, but, uh. I had, I had indicated to, uh, Russ Preston that I, I'm available, uh, although I felt this time gonna be gone, even before my, my big vacation, uh, to work with him on, you know, trying to come up with some kinda compromise on the bylaws, uh, the two that you saw. Um, but I don't know how far I can go before, cause what I wrote up was something I thought that could get through town meeting and that the board would like, uh, would be able to approve, and, um.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They weren't happy with it, they basically knocked it off the table just to, you know, as, as a start, so I, I don't know where we're going with that, but, but the offer is there that we would work together, uh, the two planners, uh, to try to work on a, a drafting something, so we'll see where that goes to.
Okay, so, uh, I don't have any update on the Greenway project, um.
Is that, is that, um, was there an engineer hired in, in response to the R F P and all?
Yeah, and they went on a site visit.
Okay, and so is the, is there a schedule for?
I don't know.
Them completing their work, no?
I don't know, the, the site visit, was it Horsley-Witten that was, oh, you would know.
What's that?
Who, who was hired, uh, was it Horsley, Chris?
No, no, Ty and Bond.
Ty and Bond.
Yeah.
So I don't know, and I didn't check with Catherine.
So I wonder if they have a contract with a schedule or anything, and if they've been hired, there must be a timetable.
They've been contracted, because they went to the site visit.
Yeah, yeah, but it.
They was, they were supposed to produce a plan of existing conditions, do a, um, basic, uh, hydrologic study, to know what the water flow is going through the stream area. And then come up with a basic suggestion for the bridge. And they were gonna do that, I thought, within a couple of months.
So, alright.
My suggestion at the time was, get in there right quick with a survey, because there were no leaves on the trees at the time that we were out there, there are now.
So I'll, I'll drop an email to Catherine.
I have no idea what's going on with that.
Get an update from her, um, design review?
Uh, no meeting.
No meeting, no committee, uh, Community Preservation Committee, I missed the meeting, but, uh, David.
I thought they said they were gonna do it within a couple of months.
Remember him? He's, uh, he was selected, um, at, as an Art Lodge member. Um, and they voted to provide funds to the Mashpee Housing Authority, they have that, um, rental slash mortgage assistance program, so they provided funds with that. Um, Environmental Oversight Committee?
Uh, no meeting.
Historic District?
No meeting.
M M R, David's not here, Cape Cod Commission, we know that they are working on their, the update of the regional policy plan.
That's about it, uh, some, a lot of the other meetings have been canceled, um, they have, uh, a series of scheduled meetings for, um, focused on the R P P, but, um, I haven't attended them where I was on vacation.
So what do you, what kind of meetings on the R P P, like, just?
Yeah, right now, they're just, uh, doing a lot of presentations. Right now, they're just, uh, doing a lot of presentations, um, on kind of directions they're taking. Then they, then after they present all of them, they're willing to sit down and discuss any revisions or additions.
Like the red lines on it. Um, so, yeah, the R P P is getting, uh, tweaked. Um, I do know there's gonna be, um, more of a section on affordable housing and, or housing and infrastructure. And the open, oh, no, it's One Cape. The One Cape Summit is June twenty-second and twenty-third. It's free, but you have to register. So, is day one about water? I think that day one is about water and infrastructure, and day two is about housing and other things. So if you're around, I'm going on the twenty-third. Uh, but the twenty-second and the twenty-third, it's One Cape, and, uh, it looks pretty good this year. It's in Hyannis. It's free. I think you get lunch. Okay. And that's about it. I'd, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna motion adjourn.
One second.
Call it, David?
All right.
All right. Good job, everybody.
Yep.